Mayor Adams is going to tell us when to stand for the pledge.
This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome, everybody, to the regular meeting of the Kernersville Board of Aldermen. This is Tuesday, June 30th. We'll begin this evening with an indication by Reverend Christie Clory of Kernersville Meridian Church. At this time, I'll recognize Reverend Clory.
Thank you all. Let us pray. Eternal God, source of the universe, we invite your presence into the hearts and minds of all who gather this night to work for the good of this community. We invite your presence to be with all the concerns and the matters brought before this group. We invite your presence into the holy discomfort of this unprecedented time to help us lead one another through it with an abundance of compassion and patience. We praise you, oh God, for the ways that you have implanted mind and instinct within every living being. You've given each of us the gift of this day and every day to help us see the difference between day and night, between light and darkness, between appropriate concern and panic. We praise you, oh God, who opens the eyes of the blind. Please open the eyes and the minds of those in positions to make decisions for this community to guide us wisely through challenging terrain. Open the eyes and minds of those researching new tests, vaccines, and cures. Give them all the peace of mind and heart to be clear-eyed in all their work. We praise you, oh God, you who clothe the naked. We all feel so incredibly vulnerable in this time. So as you clothed Adam and Eve as they left the garden, please give us the protection that we need to stay healthy and to walk through these times physically and emotionally. We praise you, oh God, you who free the captive. Free those carrying the burden of the community. Be present to them so that they do not feel alone in their decision. We praise you, oh God, you who lift up the fallen. Help us to recover and to stand straight again. Please send special blessings to the families and friends of those who have died or who are suffering in this time. Be with all those medical providers serving the needs of those who are sick and suffering. Comfort them and offer peace in their routines of service. We praise you, oh God, you who gird us with strength. Let us come together as a community of support so that we are not isolated and alone. Let us find strength in you. We praise you, oh God, who removes the sleep from our eyes, the slumber from our eyelids. Let us one day soon wake up and praise your name first and not think about tragedy or fear. Let all humanity arise from slumber and fight injustice wherever it may occur. Let each of us understand what our role is in this effort to repair the world to reconcile us one with another in partnership with you. So that one day you will be one and your name will be one. And so we gather and we welcome your presence among us this night. In Christ we come. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Clory. At this time, we will say the Pledge of Allegiance. It'll be led by Blaine Thompson.
If everybody will please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right, as we begin this meeting, we will need to take a roll call since it is a remote meeting. That is a requirement. I think that everyone involved in the meeting is able to to have their microphone on. Alderman Kenny Cruz was having trouble with that a few minutes ago, but perhaps that's been fixed. So I'll basically do a roll call. Mayor Pro Tem Fulton.
Present.
Thank you. Alderman Bruce Boyer.
Present.
Thank you. Alderman Chris Thompson.
Present. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Kenny Cruz. Are you back on the call?
I saw his name pop up. I think he's on the call.
Alderman Joe Pennix.
Present. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I see our town manager Curtis Swisher.
Present.
Thank you. Our town clerk Keith Hooker.
Present.
Thank you. Our town attorney John Wolfe. Thank you. Our police chief Tim Summers. Thank you. Our fire rescue chief Scott Alderman. Thank you. Our Parks and Rec director Ernie Pages.
Present.
Thank you. I understand one of the staff in our Parks and Rec Department, Casey Johnson, is on the line as well.
Yes.
Thank you, Casey. I appreciate you joining us tonight. Curtis, who else is here from our staff?
Jeff Hatling, Community Development Director. Dorn Malpa Public Services Director. Franz Ador, Finance Director. Crystal Tanner, HR Director, is here in the courtroom. And Adam Hutchins, IT Director, is here in the courtroom.
Okay, is there any other staff on this call at this time?
No, ma'am.
Okay, Kenny Cruz, can you hear me? I had seen Kenny come onto the call and then leave and then come back. Maybe Curtis or Keith or Adam could assist him. And I'll go ahead with the ceremonial items on the agenda that do not involve a public hearing or require a vote. So in this first item, I'll have assistance with our Director of Parks and Recreation, Ernie Pages. If Ernie, if you could be on standby. July is Parks and Recreation Month. And despite the fact that COVID-19 has caused closures of many things over this time period, at times various park amenities, playgrounds, bathroom facilities, a lot of different things have been closed by the executive order of the governor or by the emergency declarations. We still have an active Parks and Rec Department and system. There's a lot to do to just physically maintain the parks, even if the activities are not going on. We have, however, modified some of the activities that we offer to be able to still continue to provide programming during this time. So at this point in time, I'd like to introduce a proclamation declaring July as Park and Recreation Month. Whereas our town's parks and recreation programs are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the qualities life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of our community. And whereas Parks and Recreation Programs build healthy, active communities, aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for individuals who have mental, physical, or sensory disabilities, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas Parks and Recreation Programs increase the community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas Parks and Recreation Areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our town and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and spend time outdoors. Now therefore, I, Don Morgan, as mayor of the town of Kernersville, and on behalf of the Board of Aldermen, do hereby proclaim July 2020 as Park and Recreation Month in the town of Kernersville and recognize with appreciation the efforts of our volunteer Parks and Rec Advisory Board, Parks and Rec Director, Ernie Pages, our Parks and Recreation Staff, and the contribution that Kernersville Parks and Recreation makes towards the well-being of our citizens, the enjoyment of children, and the improvement of the natural environment of our community. Mr. Pages, if you'd like to speak about some of the programs you're currently doing to celebrate parks and to continue recreation programming during COVID-19, anything else you'd like to say about this celebration in July?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This year's a little bit different than years in the past. Years in the past, we've had some sort of theme that we followed and we did programming and events following that theme. This year, given the pandemic, it's simply, we are Parks and Recreation, which means it's the essential role that we've played throughout this pandemic. Some locations have seen incredible increases of traffic, foot traffic. For instance, our parks in Kernersville, we've seen 110% increase in visitations based on Google cell phone tracking in the parks. So what we've, the whole celebration is just the fact that parks are here for you to exercise, walk, get out, given the state of affairs. And then the programs that we're doing right now is just a community-based, a community building. We're not doing summer camp. We're not doing that this year. But we are, what we have been doing is going out, doing outreach to the community, doing mobile recreation, pop-up parks. Just getting out to communities, giving them the outlets that they're used to having in a different way. And we've been doing driving movies. We've been reaching out through virtual programming. So basically, we are Parks and Recreation Month. We are Parks and Recreation just means we're here for you. You know, check us out and find out what you can do in a different, different way. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ernie. All right, the next celebratory proclamation we have is for the 30th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act. And Casey Johnson from Parks and Rec will speak on this proclamation. First, I will introduce it. So the town of Kernersville has long been involved with the Americans with Disabilities Act celebration. And we participated in the 25th anniversary celebration, which was a Forsyth County-wide celebration that many different local governments were represented at. And there was a great turnout by the community. It was held at Triad Park five years ago. So whereas on July 26, 1990, President George H.W. Bush signed into law the Americans with Disabilities Act to ensure the civil rights of people with disabilities and to establish a clear and comprehensive national mandate for the elimination of discrimination against individuals with disabilities. Whereas the ADA has expanded opportunities for Americans with disabilities by reducing barriers, changing perceptions, and increasing opportunities for full participation and inclusion in community life. Whereas the town of Kernersville affirms the principles of equity and inclusion for persons with disabilities as embodied in the principles of the Americans with Disabilities Act and other laws and regulations, including federal, state, and local laws and ordinances. And whereas numerous organizations in Kernersville and Forsyth County worked with constituents and communities to bring forth the promise of hope and freedom that was envisioned by the passage of the ADA. And whereas July 26, 2020, is the 30th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, a time to celebrate this landmark legislation, to mark the progress that has been made, and to remember that there is work yet to be done. Now therefore, I, Don Morgan, as mayor of the town of Kernersville, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim July 26, 2020, as Americans with Disabilities Act 30th Anniversary Day in Kernersville and urge all citizens to reaffirm the principles of equity and inclusion laid out in the ADA and recommit our effort to reach full ADA compliance so that every resident of our town has the opportunity to succeed. Some of the efforts that have been going on in Kernersville includes efforts by a citizen group, the Mayor's Council for People with Disabilities. There are tremendous advocates for proper use of handicapped parking spaces and the addition of sidewalks in our community, amongst other projects that they have taken on. And we also celebrate our Freedom Park and Fourth of July Park. It's a playground that is a very inclusive playground that, that has appeals and facilities for all children. And so that's a wonderful thing that we've done for our town. But we have other special programs and ideas for the future. And Casey's very involved in working on that and involved in the town's participation in the Americans with Disabilities Act Anniversary Day. So at this time, I'd like to recognize Casey Johnson.
Hi. Oh, yeah, hi. Thank you. I just wanted to first thank the board and Mayor Don Morgan for making such a public acknowledgement of such important legislation. And I'm very proud of all the efforts y'all have been making, especially in the last five years. And I'm very excited about our future plans. I did want to share that before COVID and all the safety precautions that we've taken, we had a lot of spring events planned for people with physical disabilities, intellectual disabilities, and veterans. And we are rescheduling those for hopefully the fall, but whenever it's safe again. And we are continuing to develop partnerships with local nonprofits regarding seniors and people with visual impairments.
Sounds great. Thank you for your efforts. I appreciate your involvement in this. All right, and now to finish our roll call, I have Alderman Kenny Cruz. Are you on the line? Hey Kenny, I cannot hear you, but I can see you.
Kenny's having problems with the microphone on his laptop and he's using his house phone, I think. So that may not be, may not be working all that great.
Can he, can he speak into the house phone? Make sure we can hear him?
I don't know. He might have to use hand signals for a little while.
Did, has, just to ask, because there's two very important public hearings tonight and a lot of other decisions. Is there a way to try with his cellphone?
Well, I'll have someone go back over and see if they can get it working to where he can call in. I think he's probably going to have to call in on separate number, call in and have Adam put him through. So I'll, I'll have someone go back over and try to get that done.
Okay.
While the public hearing's going on. He can see and hear us, I believe. Is that correct, Kenny? Okay.
Oh, that's good.
I'll have someone go over and work with him to get it to where he can maybe communicate with us.
All right, well, if you can, if you can see and hear everything, that's a good start, Kenny. All right, all right, so we'll move on now to the rest of the agenda, to our business meeting. And we'll begin this evening with public hearings. With the format we're using with a remote meeting, state law requires that we have a comment period at the close of a public hearing before a vote is taken. So a vote will not be taken tonight on either of the two public hearing items. Instead, at the end of the public hearing, we'll set a date and a time to continue that item over to have our, our meeting with the vote. But the, the public hearing will be held tonight and will be closed at the appropriate part of the agenda. Okay, so we are having a remote located meeting. So during this remote meeting, persons wishing to speak to the board on an agenda item, including public comments where applicable, can call this number 336-996-7289, beginning 30 minutes prior to the meeting. Callers will be recognized in the order they are received and will be transferred into the meeting when it is their turn to speak. Persons wishing to send written comments on agenda items other than public hearing items can email them to khooker@toknc.com no later than 5:00 PM on the day prior to the meeting. Persons wishing to send written comments on public hearing items can email them to khooker@toknc.com no later than 24 hours after the public hearing for meetings with remote or electronic attendance by board members. Persons may also come to Town Hall to attend the meeting and speak on an item. And we do have a microphone and camera set up at Town Hall if you'd like to speak that way. Okay, so you'll have 24 hours at the conclusion of the public hearing to make further comments on public hearing items. As to the public session items, we will vote on them this evening. We do have time limits established. When an agenda item is demoted as public hearing, persons attending, and that includes callers in, shall be permitted to address the Board of Aldermen regarding the item under consideration. Those speaking in favor speaking first, and those against speaking second. Proponents and opponents shall each be given 20 minutes of time to speak and may choose to allow one speaker to utilize that time or choose to allocate the time among different speakers. In the event that either proponents or opponents have not designated a speaker or speakers to represent that view, the mayor shall divide the 20 minutes by the number of speakers wishing to address the Board of Aldermen. And each such speaker shall be allowed that given time within which to express his or her comments, ideas, concerns, expressions, and desires. After the opponent speaks, the mayor will allow the proponents five minutes for rebuttal. If the proponents choose to exercise this option, the opponents will also have five minutes for rebuttal. In the event that the proponents do not present rebuttal, then the opponents shall be given no further time to speak. Okay, so the 20-minute time limit and the rebuttal and counter rebuttal are all standard procedures that we have done in meetings for several years now. And then the calling in procedure is just for a remote meeting under a state called State of Emergency.
Mayor, who is doing the timing on the, on the time?
Um, well, if we were in the courtroom, I think you would be. Would you like to time it?
I can do that.
Okay. All right, and so we're going to make every effort to start and stop the clock as transitions are being made. So if we're transitioning from one caller to another, if we've called on our Community Development Director to answer some questions, we'll stop the clock then so that we can make sure that we hear as many people as possible. Although what will help, given there's a lot of interest in speaking on this topic, is if speakers can be mindful of the length of their comments, if they could maybe not repeat what someone else had just said and could realize there may be someone else speaking after them and, and kind of be respectful that everyone could have a chance to speak. If for some reason there's more speakers than the time allotted will allow for, there is that opportunity to send in comments within 24 hours after the conclusion of the public hearing. Okay. All right, so Bruce, we will have 20 minutes for proponents, 20 for opponents, then five for rebuttal, and a second five minutes for rebuttal. Okay, our first public hearing. It's Greg Garrett, Agent for Owner. Petitioner requests a single-phase special use district rezoning from AG Agriculture to RS 12 S PRD, residential, single-family, planned residential development. Special use district for property located near the southwest terminus of Teague Lane at Watkins Ford Road, being all with PIN number 6873-575501, containing 12.44 plus or minus acres. Requested uses residential, single-family PRD zoning docket K 762 A1 in consideration of an ordinance for zoning said property. We'll begin with a presentation by our Community Development Director, Jeff Hatling.
Thank you, Mayor Morgan. I'll transition into my presentation. As described, this is a special use district rezoning where there's a specific site plan and specific uses. In this case, it's a single-family residential on a 12-point acre tract with a density of two units per acre. The site plan, this is an expansion of an existing subdivision currently under construction as shown on the illustration. It's a northern end. Access is from Watkins Ford Road and Teague Lane. Road connectivity to the adjacent properties provided in this common recreation area is required in the PRD. The building design owes home size a little range from 1,600 square foot to 3,000 square foot. It's an arts and crafts style architecture. Planning Board and Staff Recommendation Regarding Rezoning Move to amend the Unified Development Ordinance of the Town by rezoning a property case K 62. A1 from AG to RS 12 S PRD. The said rezoning being consistent with the town's comprehensive plan, the Kernersville Development Plan, and further being both reasonable and being both reasonable in the public interest because of the following facts. Petitioner requests a special use district rezoning allowing building architectural standards to be applied to assure the development addresses development plan goal of establishing Kernersville as a unique, high-quality community within Triad. Secondly, the petitioner requests special use district rezoning allowing a specific site plan to be considered to address a unique character of the area and to allow for appropriate buffering and transition from existing residents. Regarding a site plan, approval of the site plan with conditions as presented in the planning board report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions of Jeff at this time?
There's a house, is that just off the property, a house on Teague Lane? That's right before the sign.
Correct. Yes, it is. That's outside of the subdivision.
Okay, it is set back quite a ways, actually.
Yes.
Okay, this is a public hearing. I'll declare the public hearing open. It looks like for this public hearing, we have one person lined up to speak, Mr. Greg Garrett. Mr. Swisher or Mr. Hutchins, do you know of any other speakers that have called in on this public hearing item?
I do not. Mr. Hutchins has been handling that. He can tell you if anyone else has called in.
Okay, I see 17 out of 251 people, so I just want to make sure I'm seeing all the names that that might have called in.
Right now, Mr. Garrett is the only one, Mayor.
Okay, all right, I will recognize. Now, Adam, by clicking on them, do I turn them on or do you turn their mic on?
Soon as you recognize them, he's unmuted.
Okay, all right, Mr. Garrett, my assumption is that you're speaking in favor of this rezoning. But if you could state your name and introduce yourself like you did for the planning board meeting, you may speak.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the board. My name's Greg Garrett and I represent Sugar Combs as well as the Chamberlain Family, which is the current property owner of the subject site tonight. I reside at 6420 Hampton Knoll Road, and that's in Clemmons 27012. To start tonight, I would just, would just want to just acknowledge your staff that have really bent over backwards to accommodate us developers in some unprecedented times with, with COVID and just trying to keep the business moving forward. Just, just really impressed with how your staff have accommodated me in this request and just want to recognize them. Also would like to say that our process with them began at the first of the year, back in, in early January, looking at this adjoining tract to a project that in, in early January, looking at this adjoining tract to a project that I rezoned for Sugar back in late 2018, known as Watkins Landing. This is about a 12 and a half acre site that adjoins that currently under development project. And the request before you tonight is, is the same zoning that was approved on that project. However, this site is actually going to be, the development plan for this site is going to be much less dense than the, than what was approved in December of 2018. We are looking at over 25% open space for the project. The density will be capped at two units per acre. I think you'll find that it is consistent with other rezonings in the area, specifically the one that's currently under development, but, you know, all the development patterns that have kind of taken place along Teague Lane over the past 15, 20 years. You know, as Mr. Hatling pointed out, the, the homes that are being offered there are actually going to be the same as the currently under development project of Watkins Landing. Square footage is ranging, ranging from 1,600 to 3,000 square feet. And did spend time reaching out to each and every adjoining property owner to answer any questions they might have or address concerns. And I believe everyone, I mean, there's some that aren't, you know, happy about it, but at the end, I don't believe there was anything left to be resolved with adjoining property owners. And it sounds like maybe the, the lack of public comments may be, may be, you know, proof of that on this case. But anyways, I would like to just, just ask for your favorable vote in 24 hours from now. Believe the plan that's before you is consistent with your land use plan and it's in uniform with the development patterns existing along Teague Lane and, and therefore I just ask for your favorable consideration. Happy to answer any questions if you might have them.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Mayor Protam, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. Um, I know there's, it says in here to build 25 homes, but then I also see there are 25 lots with 20 homes. So I just want to clarify, is it 20 or 25 because it looks like it's 12 acres, a little bit over that? So if it's two houses per acre, that's going to come in around 24. So I just want to clarify how many houses are going out there because I'm, I've tried to look at it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I noticed that as well. I think the discrepancy lies in the fact that we looked at, we, we've actually incorporated a little bit of the land that was part of the currently under development project. And it looks like there are at least five lots there that are, are maybe totally on that site or partially on that site. And I think that's where the discrepancy comes, but I know that Rochelle and, and Jeff have looked at that closely, and I'll let him speak to that if, if you would, Jeff.
Correct, that's, this is kind of a combination of the earlier project and the current proposed project.
Okay, can you just answer my question? Is it 20 houses or 25?
25 houses are in addition, 25 houses in addition to what was previously approved in 2018.
So on this site, we're looking at 25 houses?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I just, I want to clarify, that's a little confusing. Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Swisher, is there anyone in the courtroom who wanted to speak to this matter?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone else who's joined the call who wanted to speak to this matter?
No, ma'am.
Mayor Morgan, during the planning board public hearing, there was no one who spoke in opposition.
Okay, all right, so there's no one additional who signed up to speak in favor. I'll call out, is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? I'll give a minute.
There is no one in the courtroom.
Okay, and there's no one else who has called in on this case? All right, in that event, I'll declare the public hearing closed. At this time, do any, does Mayor Protam or any alderman have a question of Mr. Hatling or Mr. Garrett on this case? Mayor Protam, Jenny Fulton, do you have any additional questions?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Alderman Bruce Boyer, do you have any questions?
In the report here, there are five different designs. Is that pretty accurate to what choices people will have?
Mr. Garrett?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Thompson?
I have no questions, thank you. It appears that it follows to suit to everything else that's being built out there and what they've already done, so I have no questions, thank you.
Okay, I don't, Kenny, are you able to speak to us?
Yes, ma'am, can you hear me now?
I can! I'm so glad you can speak to us. Do you have any questions or comments on this case at this time?
No comments. I just thank our qualified staff to help me get up to, to the ball on this computer deal. I'm having to use my phone, and I just needed to delete it so I could speak to you, but Hawn has got me in the right direction now, thank you.
Okay, that's good news. You know, we've done several of these meetings and you've been able to call in with no problem before, so I'm glad that you're able to speak to us now. Um, Alderman Joe Pennix, do you have any questions or comments on this case at this time?
No, ma'am, no comments.
Okay, so Bruce, what, do you have the time? What time is it right now?
It's about 7:37.
Okay, so we need to wait 24 hours before we can have a meeting to vote on this, but for everyone's convenience, would, would the board like to wait and continue this meeting till Thursday? It seems like maybe four o'clock in the afternoon might be a good time, but we could do something later, so it's kind of after working hours if you'd like to. We could do something earlier in the day. So would someone like to make a proposal?
I'll make a motion that we move this to four o'clock on Thursday, being the 2nd of July.
A second, Mayor.
Okay, all right, I'll do a roll call vote. Appreciate the motion and the second. Mayor Protam Fulton, I know you just seconded that, but how do you vote?
In favor, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Boyer, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Thompson, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Cruz, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, and this is just to set the continuation of this public hearing so we can vote on it to Thursday at 4 P M. Okay, Alderman Pennix, how do you vote?
In favor.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there anything more we need to discuss on public hearing 1A? If not, we'll move on to public hearing 1B. It's a public hearing on a rezoning. Bill Greco of Land Solutions of N C, agent for owner. Petitioner requests a single-phase special use district rezoning from R S 20 residential single-family to R S 12 S P R D residential, single-family, planned residential development. Special use district for property located near the intersection of Shields Road at Union Cross Road, being a part of pin number 6885068134, containing 39 plus or minus acres. Requested uses residential, single-family, P R D, planned residential development. Zoning docket K 781, in consideration of an ordinance for zoning said property. Again, the public hearing rules are a, as I read at the beginning, are 20 minutes in favor, 20 minutes to speak in opposition, five minutes for rebuttal, and five minutes for a counter rebuttal. Alderman Bruce Boyer is the timekeeper for it. If you're not in the courtroom and would like to speak on this public hearing, you may call in, and the phone number is 336-996-7289. Again, that is 336-996-728, excuse me, 7289. Because this is a public hearing during a state of emergency that was called by the state, the board cannot vote on this matter tonight. They need to wait at least 24 hours at the conclusion of the public hearing in order to vote. If you'd like to make a comment about this item, this public hearing, zoning docket K 781 after this meeting and in that 24-hour period, you may email your comment to K hooker at T O K N C dot com. That's K hooker at T O K N C dot com. Okay, we'll begin with a presentation by our community development director, Mr. Jeff Hatling.
Thank you, Mayor Morgan. I'll transition to my presentation. As the mayor described, this is a special use district once again with a specific site plan and specific use, the use of single-family residential detached. It's approximately 39 acres, have 117 lots with a density of three units per acre. The land use plan for this area, the Kernsville Development Plan calls for the site to be low-density residential. Land use plan defines low-density residential as, the town has identified that one of its unique high-quality community components is residential areas that are predominantly single-family residential. The larger the single-family designated area, the greater the supply of available land, which assists in supporting a greater price range of single-family homes. The low-density single-family residential has been primary land use in Kernsville. However, rising housing costs and smaller household size is causing a greater demand for higher-density residential. Lower-density residential shall have a density of 0.3 units per acre unless the area has a lower density than 0 to 2 units per acre, then that, that shall be considered. The surrounding area ranges from field crests, which is adjacent to this project, is a P R D at 1.9 units per acre. The surrounding single-family consists of attached projects like Salisbury Crossing, Quaker Ridge, the Tredagar P R D that range in density from 2.2 to 5.9 units per acre. Regarding this site-specific site plan, the typical lot widths are 55 foot and 5,005 square, 500, 5,005 square feet. Lot size is shown on the site plan. There's a 30-foot tight buffer yard along the borders of the site, so the entire border surrounded by the buffer, and also there's some undisturbed area. Within the project, street trees are located 50 foot on center along the streets. There's a 2.17 acre common area consisting of a tot lot play area, mail kiosk, and a parking lot, shown here. Forty-six percent of the site is common open space. That common open space is spread throughout the site and up along Shields Road. There's a public sidewalk to the Ivy Redmond Park. Regarding stormwater and watershed protection, there's a unique watershed protection existing on the site with the deeded conservation easements for stream restoration, which the town has undertook. So the current property owner worked for the town, providing some conservation easements for stream restorations the town undertook, as shown here and illustrated. A stormwater treatment pond is provided, so all the developed area will drain to the stormwater treatment device, the pond. Prior construction, a complete engineering stormwater construction plan is required. Any, any project with a stormwater pond goes through the Stormwater Committee, which is made up of Public Services and Community Development Staff, along with the Town Manager, and they'll oversee the engineering design of the stormwater improvements. Regarding the building design, basic hip and gable roof design, window trim with, that incorporates use of decorative shutters, heads, aprons, or cornices. Well-defined stylistic front entrances with panel doors, panel garage doors with framed decorative trim, and the features of these design features shall be on all sides, and also distinctive trim shall be incorporated. Regarding traffic generation, in comparison, the Institute of Trap, Transportation Engineer Trip Generation 10th Edition, at single-family detached housing per dwelling unit generating 9.44 trips daily per unit. There's 117 lots, proposed residential project would generate approximately 1,104 trips per day. Roughly half would go east and half would go west on Shields Road. Property is currently zoned R S 20. A comparable R S 20 P R D could establish 91 lots with an estimated daily trip, trip generation of 859 trips per day, which is 245 less trips per day from what is proposed. Traffic counts, N C D O T undertakes traffic counts every two years. The 2019 traffic count should be released later this year. N C D O T 2,000 traffic counts for Shields Road and Union Cross Road, 2007, there were 6,300, 2,017, 8,400. Union Cross Road at Shields Road intersection in 2,007, 14,000, 2,017, 15,000. Traffic improvements, as shown on the site plan, right and left turn lanes shall be provided on Shields Road and shall be reviewed and approved by N C D O T. 1.296 acres is being dedicated for future Shields Road widening. Regarding planning board meeting questions and concerns, so after the public hearing, the staff prepared a memo to assist the planning board and public in the final decision and recommendations on this project. I'll just summarize some of the questions and concerns. The current construction activity in Field Crest is a public service work related to extending a culvert and doing some minor stream restoration. So that was one of the questions, what, what was a construction activity that was actually in Field Crest being conducted by our Public Services? Regarding Shields Road and Union Cross intersection improvements, there are two potential options to address traffic concerns. One, level service, the intersection decreases significantly, causing N C D O T or the town to redesign the intersection to add additional turn lanes. Secondly, when the Kernsville Boulevard Loop Road from N C 66, the new Big Mill Farm interchange is constructed, Shields Road and Wicker Road would be widened with intersection improvements at Union Cross Road. N C D O T is currently over $700 million underfunded. No new projects have been considered at this time. At the earliest, intersection improvements could receive funding four years from now with design and construction taking approximately three years. So a minimum, you'd be looking at seven-plus years before you would see any intersection improvements at Union Cross and Shields Road. Regarding the second entrance that was brought up on Shields Road, Shields Road is a major thoroughfare which calls for limited access from residential developments. Developer originally had two entrances on Shields Road, and N C D O T and town staff recommended only one. There was a question regarding this being a part of an earlier rezoning. This parcel was a part, a portion of an early rezoning was drawn by the applicant, consists of this site, Site B, as illustrated. Across the street was Site A, some townhomes, and Site C was next to Tredagar, and this project was withdrawn. Question, was should developer be required to make intersection improvements at Union Cross Road and Shields Road? The applicant is proposing R S 12 zoning P R D to allow them to construct three units per acre for a total of 117 units. If they stayed with R S 20 and requested a P R D at two units per acre, they could construct 91 lots. 2008, an R S 27 division was approved for this tract that proposed 51 lots at a density of 1.3, 1.38 units per acre. The 26 or 66 additional units would not warrant a condition for multimillion-dollar intersection improvements. So during special use rezoning, you can apply conditions to the developer, but in this case, the cost of that multimillion dollar would not warrant due to 26 or 66 additional units. Regarding schools, the community development staff works closely with the community facility staff on sharing growth data and planning for new school sites. Another question, what is the phasing on this site plan? On the site plan, it has the following watershed site data block, and is not related to the zoning density, so there was a question or concern about the watershed blocks showing Phase 1, Phase 2, different densities. This relates to the watershed calculations, is not part of the overall density. This project has a three unit per acre density, but on the site plan, you do see this watershed note. Could a second entrance be made to Union Cross Road? It would be costly to construct a street over to Union Cross Road. Fieldcrest needs a second entrance for the UDO required connectivity and improving the emergency access. Regarding connectivity, the Fieldcrest and Tretagare neighborhoods have expressed concerns that the proposed street connection would become a major cut through for drivers wishing to avoid the traffic backed up at Union Cross and Shields Road intersections. Till such time, the NC DOT can make intersection improvements, planning board and staff are recommending the following condition. Street A, which is a connection to Fieldcrest, shall be connected to Emperor Lane. The gate shall be installed to prevent non-emergencies traffic, the gate shall be secured with a knot lock approved by the Kernsville Fire and Rescue Department. The gate shall remain in place until Union Cross Road and Shields Road intersection improvements are made. Second condition, to further address the neighborhood's concern about cut through traffic, planning board staff are recommending the following condition. The street connection between Shields Road and Emperor Lane shall be redesigned, follow similar alignment as shown. So on the right-hand side is the existing site plan. We would move the entrance further, closer to the park. We'd make a non-direct route. We would eliminate the access, current access and shift it, and also eliminate another street section. So basically, we create this non-direct route to prevent cut through traffic. A good example I've used, with a couple people have asked, I live in the Branchwood neighborhood, currently Oakhurst and West Mountain Street are both thoroughfares. If traffic backs up, people continue to take that route, but there is an option when traffic is stopped for parades or accidents, people do have the option on Oakhurst to turn onto Gordon Street, Branchwood and the Bullcrest to West Mountain Street. So this is very similar, it would function the same, that during normal traffic patterns, you would not use this as a cut through, but during emergency services and road closures, it would give an option for an alternative route. The planning board had a 6-3 vote, and staff recommendation on the rezoning moved to amend the unified development ordinance of town by rezoning a property in case K 781 from RS 20 to RS 12 S PRD. They said rezoning being consistent with the town's comprehensive plan, the Kernsville Development Plan, and further being both reasonable in the public interest because of the following facts. The petition requests a special use district zoning allowing building architectural standards to be applied, this ensures the development addresses the development plan goal of establishing Kernsville's unique high quality community within the triad. Secondly, the petition requests special use district zoning allowing a consideration of a specific site plan to address the unique character of the area and to allow for appropriate buffering and road improvements such as Shields Road. Planning board a 9-0 vote, and staff recommendation on the site plan, approval of the site plan with the conditions listed in the planning board report with the following added condition, which I described before, the street connection between Shields Road and Emperor Lane shall be redesigned to follow a similar alignment as shown below. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Hatling at this time?
I've got a series of questions.
Do you want to ask them now or wait till the public hearing's over?
Whenever you would like me to ask them.
Okay, this is a public hearing, I'll declare the public hearing open. I have two people that are displayed as being interested in speaking on this public hearing item. Curtis, has anyone come into the courtroom to speak?
Yes ma'am, we have two individuals here, that both of them will speak in opposition to the item.
Okay, alright, so let me give the phone number again, if you'd like to call in and speak on this public hearing item, the number is 336-996-7289, again, 336-996-7289. There's 20 minutes for opponents and 20 minutes for proponents, and then opportunity for rebuttal. We'll begin with the proponents. At this time, I'll declare the public hearing open. Okay, welcome back everybody.
Adam, if you could share your screen again, thanks.
Adam, are we back on YouTube or do we need to wait?
We are back up and live, ma'am.
Okay, welcome everybody back to the meeting. We're sorry about the interruption, but it looks like everyone who had already called in to speak is still on the line. So I will confirm that. I had seen David Calhoun, and I had seen, let's see.
Madam Mayor, Bill Greco was one of the callers.
And I do not see Bill Greco anymore. I do see caller two and caller three, I'm assuming they're calling about this case, but maybe one of those is Kenny Cruz?
I'm here, went off, but I'm back on.
Okay Kenny.
It looks like he is caller two.
Alright, and who is caller three?
Kenny is separate from caller two. Now it appears he may be caller two.
I did not have Mr. Greco back on the line.
You do or don't?
I did not have him back on the line.
He is caller three, that's him.
Did you say Mr. Greco is on the line?
If he is caller three, yes. I gotta talk to him now, let's see.
We're anticipating all callers will call back.
Hey, this is Bill Greco calling on a different line, sure you still got me? You still got me?
No worries.
Mr. Greco is back on the line, whenever you call in, I'll unmute him.
Mayor, when we go back live, you'll just make an announcement to tell anyone that was on the line that got cut off just to call back, and we'll put them back in the meeting.
Okay, so we're not live right now?
We are not live. Are we? Okay.
We are live right now, Mr. Greco is on the line, Mr. Calhoun as well.
So having a remote meeting causes challenges, but having an in-person meeting causes challenges as well. We've had the power go out right in the middle of a speaker presenting, we've had terrible storms, we've had standing room only crowds, and yet the show goes on, as they say. But this isn't, this is an important meeting of the Kernsville Board of Aldermen, and I'm glad that everybody appears to be back on the call, who was on the call before. It looks like we have the same number of people watching, and we have the same number of people either called in or linked into the meeting with their, with their cameras on, so. I'm gonna double check that we have all the Aldermen, I'll do, and that we can hear everybody, I'll do a roll call, if you can just say present, Mayor Pro Tem Jenny Fulton.
Present, thank you.
Thank you Alderman Bruce Boyer.
Present, thank you.
Thank you Alderman Chris Thompson.
Present, thank you.
Alderman Kenny Cruz.
Present.
Thank you Alderman Joe Pennix.
Present, thank you.
Thank you, our staff appears to still be on the call, all the Aldermen are on the call. So the next item is the public hearing on the rezoning. Bill Greco of Land Solutions of North Carolina, agent for owner, petition requests a single phase special use district rezoning from RS 20 to RS 12 S PRD. For property located near the intersection of Shields Road at Union Cross Road being part of PIN number 6885068134, containing 39 plus or minus acres, requested uses residential single family PRD planned residential development, zoning docket K 781. Prior to the interruption, we had a presentation by our community development director Jeff Hatling. So, right before we cut out, I declared the public hearing open, but in case any of that was lost, I'll at this time declare the public hearing open. Bruce Boyer is the timekeeper for this. I see that we have Bill Greco on the line to speak in favor. At this time, I'll recognize Mr. Greco. Mr. Greco, if you could introduce yourself like you did at the planning board meeting, and then proceed.
Thank you Madam Mayor, my name is Bill Greco, I'm with Land Solutions. Our office is located at 200 South Regional Road in Greensboro, representing the owner developer this evening in this case. First off, I'd like to echo Mr. Garrett's comments on the previous case and thank the staff and the board and everyone involved. These virtual remote meetings are interesting, I've done this in a number of jurisdictions lately, and I can assure you Kernsville is not alone in technical glitches and hiccups, but thanks to all for taking the steps necessary. Typically, in a presentation, I would be as brief as possible and touch the highlights on the staff report, the planning board's action, and just reiterate some of the land use plan, some of the things that we align with very well. In this case, certainly been privy to a large volume of emails, written comments, so forth so on, from concerned citizens, so it's always challenging in a public hearing to be mindful to address comments in a meaningful way, and try to get the point across without being caught up too much in the minutia or in a tit for tat type situation, but my immediately following comments here are in large part based on what I've seen, heard, read, been a part of, just to get the board up to speed on where we're at. I do feel the online and the technology piece here has been very, very effective in getting out the reminders, the information, the Nextdoor app that the town clerk has been using and sending out the reminders. It's been very inclusive, it's generated a lot of comments, and that's the important thing in a public hearing, is that the public be afforded that opportunity to comment, regardless of whether that's email or physically in the building, the voices have been heard, and we've certainly received those comments. We sent out our own mailing and received a few calls based on that, and we actually had the two folks come visit us in our office to discuss this, this project. The staff report that's in favor, it has evolved since the beginning of the process, certainly to address comments, concerns, considerations, and at the end of this process, as you've seen, it does recommend approval with the conditions. The planning board had most of these comments as well at their meeting, so we came out of those processes with a favorable recommendation. The land use plan again does favor this project, we align right in the middle realistically. If you look at the facts of the density, the report referenced 1. something up to, I think, five units per acre in our surrounding area. We're asking for three units per acre, which is what the plan essentially tells us to ask for. It says 1 to 3, we're asking for 3. 3 is certainly in the middle of that 1 to 5 units per acre that surrounds this property. Touching back on that history, there was a previous request on this property that was a higher density, that was withdrawn. So this plan has evolved, and this project now hits the middle, if you will, of the density requirements around us, conformity. Using that PRD method, I don't know how well it shows on the plan, but we're saving a lot of trees. We're basically developing primarily overwhelmingly in an area that is pastureland currently. If you've been by the site, there's a couple big pastures, you see some woods along the perimeter. We're not getting into those woods, we're not getting into the steeper slopes, we're not getting into any of those challenging areas, and it's the PRD that allows us that creativity and that flexibility to make this plan fit the land, if you will. We do have a park connection, public sidewalk going over to the park, which I think is an important amendment to hear, both for our immediate residents, joiners, so forth and so on, our street connections and our architectural standards. If you look back at those, these are very, very similar to the first case that we heard tonight, and that demonstrates some very consistent application across Kernsville, throughout your jurisdiction, by your staff and your petitioners. I think everyone is aware and using this PRD very effectively within the town to promote the values and the goals of the various plans. One thing that's been a very hot topic, if you will, which I'll touch on briefly, is values and the home types. Again, if you look at the staff findings on our PRD character, our design, our materials, our features, they're all in harmony with what the plan is asking us to do. As far as the home values, I've seen in some of the written comments, the words "low income", from a land planning, land use perspective, when we see those words, we immediately think of subsidized HUD housing, that's what that means to me as a land planning professional, that is not what we're doing here. We've stated before that we believe our price point coming out of the gate, if you will, should be somewhere between $250,000 to $275,000 per home on this single family project. Of course, you know, during the course of development, construction costs could rise, different things could cause that to adjust up, but that's what we consider our baseline going into this project. We do have a bit of a comparison basis, and I'll tell you how I do it, and it's not super technical, but you can just go on GIS on the tax website. So we started due north of our project, and every neighborhood we looked at is within half a mile, so that's about eight and a half football fields. Our first project we looked at is Salisbury Crossing, it has a mix of single family duplexes and triplexes. Average values in there, based on GIS website, this is just tax values, was $150,000 to $200,000 per unit. Then we just Then we just move clockwise. The next thing that we encountered on Shields Road is a manufactured home facility or what a lot of folks refer to as a trailer park. That one's harder to value, but it's it's less than what Salisbury Crossing is. Tredagar is the next subdivision that is in our proximity. It has a mix of single family homes and quadruplexes. Those values range from one hundred and twenty thousand dollars per unit up to two hundred and forty thousand dollars per unit. As we continue clockwise, Royal Village Estates is the next project that comes to us. It's about seven hundred feet away from us. Their values on the website were averaged three hundred and twelve thousand dollars per unit. Beeson Oaks is the very next one. That's single family and duplexes. That average value was about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Beeson Dale is an older subdivision there adjacent to Fieldcrest. That average tax value was a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. And finally, Fieldcrest, which is the neighborhood that that immediately joins us that we have a proposed street connection to. Fieldcrest is unique in that it's single family housing. That average was about four hundred and eleven thousand dollars. There is some disparities in there. That one's a little tougher to average. There's a difference of two hundred thousand dollars in tax value between some of those homes. So they've got a fairly large mix. My point to all that, our values, if you just look at facts, are very, very comparable, compatible and and do well for this area. Certainly nothing about this project logically or rationally or reasonably would be considered to reduce property values in the area. The other big issue that's come up for us is kind of two-folded, streets, traffic, and then the connectivity issue. So on the the street portion, NC DOT has seen this project and commented. They did not raise any red flags at their admittedly cursory review of the project. They did have some requests which we complied with, but at no point did they say, you know, the level of service, which is their baseline on Shields Road or Union Crossroad, is at any sort of crisis point, nor did they indicate anything necessary or required for that intersection as Mr. Hatling stated in his reports as well. We will have to get full DOT approval on our plans, which include the turn lanes, the widening, the storage. And as mentioned, we've we've agreed to dedicate almost one point eight acres, I believe, in new right of way to allow some future widening of Shields Road. One thing that I've spoken with some folks in person about is the fact that NC DOT is a reactive agency. I can't, as an agent or an owner or developer, nor can the town, I think, be very effective in going to DOT and saying, hey, we think something may happen here. Could you please improve this intersection? That's just not how they work with the public dollars and the tax dollars that that they're charged with. They're a reactive agency. To that end, they do update their traffic studies. I think they do a reasonable job of working with the towns and various communities to prioritize their lists. And I'm certain that nothing will be different here. The issue of connectivity, or you know, what we refer to as stub streets. The the UDO requires it. It's it's good for for all of us from a planning perspective, from an EMS perspective. And it's not optional on our part. Had we turned in a plan that did not show that connectivity, I'm confident that Mr. Hatling and staff would have rejected it out of hand. Connectivity is required. It's tough to get around that unless you have a specific finding effect by the the board and understanding the traffic concerns. You know, that goes both ways. If you look at that potential connectivity as a cut through, I think the Tredagar residents would benefit from it in being able to avoid the intersection as much as our new residents may benefit from that situation by going back through Fieldcrest. So it's, you know, that that's how streets work, public streets. The the stubs, Fieldcrest was built with that stuff. That's how that was plotted and and there. So the folks that moved in there, you know, I can't speak to what they knew or what they were informed of, but certainly a stub street existed. It's stubbed out to a large vacant piece of property in a great area of Kernersville. Logical assumption there would be at some point that street would connect to something. Tredagar is exactly the same. They have a stub street to the south of their neighborhood and with the acquisition of two parcels, you could be looking at thirty acres adjacent and connecting into Tredagar. So the connectivity is out there. It's out there for a reason. I think it's very important. I think it's been proven time and again from an EMS perspective, emergency services perspective, just general traffic flow, having more than one entrance. That's a very wise thing. We certainly support it. The town staff and planning board did talk about the two conditions. One of them was a gate. I'm not opposed to a gate and neither is our owner. We've never seen that on a public street before. It's something I'm sure we'll get more details on later. The redesign portion to make it a less direct route as a condition, we don't have an issue with that. That's that's something that does make some sense in terms of slowing traffic down and making it a little more challenging to go through from point A to point B. The timing and the thing that that Mr. Hatling spoke about with a seven year worst case scenario on NC DOT improving that intersection, that actually dovetails well with our projected build out. We think this is a six year project at roughly twenty lots per year. So our six years would dovetail right into his worst case projection on seven years. As a development team, we have local owner, local designer, some really good folks here on hand. We'll certainly be more than willing to do our part on behalf of not only our neighborhood, but the surrounding neighborhoods in lobbying DOT, pushing the town, whatever we need to do to monitor this situation with the traffic and the concerns as this project starts to build out. We're happy to do our part and be good neighbors and certainly want to be good neighbors. With that said, you know, I just summarize with, we do have a favorable staff report. We do have a favorable recommendation from the planning board. All of our governing documents, be it the UDO, the land use plan, support this request. We find the reasonableness standard to be met perfectly. We we hit right in the middle of everything. I do understand and empathize with not only planning board members, staff, but Board of Aldermen as well. Certainly, there's a lot of folks that have concerns and questions and this may not be a popular vote should you choose to approve this. But I do believe all of our our documents again warrant your approval and we would ask for your support and approval tonight. And thank you once again, and I'll certainly stay on the line to address any questions and potentially rebuttal periods. Thank you.
All right. Is there any, Bruce, how much time is left on the proponents? If you could repeat that and unmute.
Three minutes remaining of his time.
Okay. Okay. Is there anyone else here who'd like to speak in favor?
There's no one in the court.
Okay. All right. Seeing none. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? On the line, I see David Calhoun. Adam, if you could recognize David Calhoun at this time.
Madam Mayor, there's also two in the court.
Hello, Mr. Calhoun. Hello, Mr. Calhoun. Thank you for staying staying with us when the the meeting ended abruptly and restarted. We appreciate you staying with us on the line. I'd like to recognize you at this time. If you could introduce yourself, state your name and your address and then.
My name is David Calhoun. I am a retired United Methodist minister. My wife Ginger is a retired school psychologist with Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. We have owned our home at sixteen forty Tredagar Road since two thousand and six. We searched for about two years to find the town, the neighborhood and the home that we wanted. That synergy we found in Kernersville. Mayor Morgan and each of our elected aldermen, distinguished guests and other officials present for this forum, you are elected by your constituents because we perceive your ability to make wise decisions regarding difficult situations. And I want to thank each of you for your willingness to take on your role in the governance of our town. My concerns regarding the proposed development at Shields Road and Union Crossroad and the request for rezoning from RS twenty to RS twelve include the following. First, infrastructure. Present roads are inadequate to contain the increased, significant increase in traffic. Three units per acre of a hundred and seventeen lots would produce a profound increase in vehicular traffic. This will certainly result in congestion, confusion and an increase in accidents for both automobiles and pedestrians. Second, the Ivy Redman Park. This park is not designed as a neighborhood park, rather it is a destination park. Organized sports teams play baseball, softball, soccer, lacrosse and whole track events here. The new artificial turf soccer field is quite impressive. The proposed construction would result in a population immediately adjacent to the Ivy Redman facilities that the park is neither planned for nor built to host. Use restrictions applied to adjacent neighborhood families becomes a logistical night and management nightmare. No restrictions results in the park's ultimate abuse and demise. Thirdly is community integrity. The present zoning and the adjacent neighborhoods reflect a harmony of community planning, including lots, homes, architecture and standards. The intrusion of smaller homes on smaller lots that are not consonant with the present structures and standards will certainly have negative effects on the homes and neighborhoods already present. There are many other concerns, but I think these three sufficiently illuminate the necessity and wisdom of maintaining the present zoning designation of the area in question. Thank you very much for your time and your selfless service and my opportunity to speak. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Calhoun. Appreciate you joining the call. Mr. Swisher?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to, and Bruce, you've stopped the time for a moment.
Yes, he's, Mr. Calhoun used three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Swisher, could you recognize the next speaker who is in the courtroom?
Kathy Atkins will be the next speaker.
Okay, Ms. Atkins, if you can come to the microphone and introduce yourself and then we'd like to hear your your comments.
Thank you. We had to make our own technology modifications here, so.
Take a moment and adjust the screen if you'd like to, to, I think Curtis may be a little taller than you are.
I didn't want to get too close to his laptop. That's what I'm trying to do. Okay, I'm Kathy Atkins. My address is twelve ninety five Emperor Lane. And I'm here to speak in opposition. First of all, I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak on this important matter. I also want to thank those of you who have been down to take a look at this this intersection, at our neighborhoods, et cetera. I know many of, maybe all of you have, but we really appreciate that to survey the situation on your own time. That's greatly appreciated. I also want to reiterate something that we at the Fieldcrest subdivision have said all along. We are, we do not oppose responsible growth and development in Kernersville. Okay, and we know and appreciate how difficult the jobs that you do are. You know, the Community Development Organization, the Planning Board, the Aldermen. Absolutely, we do. And I also want to give a special thank you to Keith Hooker, who has been very gracious and supportive and helpful to us in the run up to these meetings and helping us to to be able to give our feedback. I'm going to be, try to be brief, but I do want to, and I'm going to make some points that you've heard before, but it is important to us at Fieldcrest tonight to make sure because so much has evolved over this time so that you know where we stand. And and I just want to say upfront, I appreciate everybody being able to give their inputs, but nothing I've heard tonight from Mr. Hatling's report and the changes that they've made from what Mr. Greco had to say changes anything with regard to how we feel in Fieldcrest and the points that we want to be to make and to be considered. First of all, the connection of and of Emperor Lane extending down into the proposed community. We have issues even with the gate that only delays the inevitable and the planning board staff report stipulates that fact. And the fact of the matter is a road there, be a gate or no gate, is a link to Fieldcrest, links it to the new development and that is significantly different different in its density and character of homes. Okay, I think it was interesting that when Mr. Greco's comments, that he named a number of neighborhoods, okay, that were comparable or less than the proposed value. He said very little about Fieldcrest, tried to downplay that. And he also left out Hearthstone, which I think is a little bit higher in value. So I want to mention that as well. So a Serpentine Street pattern, while it may help to some degree to reduce some of that cut through traffic, there'll still be increased traffic on Fieldcrest, which leads to our primary concerns that we want to reiterate. Safety of our residents and particularly the children in our neighborhood. The diminution of the quality of life, which assuredly will occur, erosion of property values. Mr. Greco can talk all he wants to about the fact that that won't happen. Common sense tells us that. All of us who have bought and sold homes, which are most of us that are on this call, which is why we're on this call, know that that is an absolute fact. It's common sense and if we had the time, we do the studies to show it. We've even seen them actually. And it's not hard to figure it out by looking at the renderings and the materials list that they already stipulated to it tonight. So that will happen. The accelerated and intensified physical erosion of our community infrastructure, the land and streets, that goes without saying. If we're going to increase the traffic through there, that's going to happen. It's going to take its toll. And the second point to make about that connectivity, let me just say this. I know everybody can Google everything in today's world, okay? But I did some educated research on this connectivity issue, all right? And I got to tell you, there are municipalities and planning departments all over this country that have dealt with the connectivity issue. There is no arguing that there are that there are benefits to connectivity. Clearly there are. There's also no arguing that there are cons to it. And if you look at almost every report you see out there from planning departments, municipalities across this country, the pros and the cons line up. It just depend, where you stand depends on where you sit on that issue. And while if there are no other considerations, connectivity is certainly nice to have. It should not be a one size fits all. So having said all of that about the connectivity issue, we believe it's entirely unnecessary because there is a way to connect that without that stub street there in that subdivision without coming through Fieldcrest. It seems to me that we've talked about everybody else's concerns and how they can be ameliorated here except for Fieldcrest. So that being said, those are the Fieldcrest, those are our neighborhood issues. But I do want to echo the fact that we also echo the concerns of the residents of Beeson Oaks, Hearthstone, Tredagar, Salisbury Crossing, and I think some other folks that are going to speak here tonight with regard to the traffic congestion on Union Cross and Shields Roads, the intersection of those roads, the impacts and the impact on the existing Ivy Redman Park and its potential expansion, which has been talked about time and time again. So those are real. And DOT has not weighed in on this in writing. I talked to someone at DOT about this project and they said they had not weighed in on it in any substantial way or done a study on it. So that's the case. But in summary, in closing, I am going to be brief. I wanted to make our major points, but this is the one point that I really want to make. You asked for public comment and feedback on this as you do on everything that you do and we appreciate that. And I trust you're listening because it's been overwhelmingly negative and in our. And I trust you're listening because it's been overwhelmingly negative and in opposition of this petition. It's been, it's been so loud and on point that it was on the front page of the Kernersville News Today and on the editorial page of the Kernersville News Today. Now, they didn't get every little detail right, but I'm going to tell you, they got the essence of the issue correct. As a matter of fact, there's been nothing but opposition expressed by anyone other than Bill Greco publicly. And that's the developers' representatives that you heard tonight, and I totally appreciate his position. But I personally have not heard a single Kernersville citizen express support for this project. Not one. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, Ms. Atkins.
Dawn, she used six minutes, so we've used nine so far.
Okay. Mr. Swisher, who else is there to speak?
Mayor, we have David Fitzpatrick also in the audience to speak.
Okay, I'll recognize David Fitzpatrick. David, if you could introduce yourself.
Hi, Ms. Mayor. My name is David Fitzpatrick. I live at 1155 Union Cross Road. Board of Aldermen and Board of Alder Women, thank you for giving us this opportunity in this democracy that we live in to voice various viewpoints. I'll try to make my comments brief. What I've heard tonight and over the past month or so goes back to one of my favorite all-time movies, Cool Hand-Wood. What we have here is a failure to communicate. Mr. Greco, unlike Mr. Garrett, who spoke earlier about the Sugar Development, truly has not, in my humble opinion, communicated to the folks that are involved in this project. I've called Mr. Hatling at Town Hall to get some more information. I do realize there's a law and there's a voluntary part where you can, the proposed developer can give information, but it's been very difficult to get that information. The price point was the first time that I heard those comments tonight. Three quick comments. The town has made a significant investment in the park. Our family owns 20 acres across the street from that. I can't speak for the Pope family, but I think the Board of Aldermen received a letter from Amy and Mike Stenit today. They represent another 20 acres across the street from that. The landowner has a right to invest in their property and to get an asset back from that investment. But also, the landowner has the right to be a good shepherd and to be a good citizen of this Kernersville. By that, I mean this. Part one. Mr. Greco made a comment that the plan fit the land. If you look at the Fieldcrest development, if you look at the Tredagar development, if you look at Salisbury Crossing development, you can't see them. They're not on the road. They're away from the road. Yeah, if you're going to, if our crown jewel is the park, the Ivy Redmond Park, when you're going down Shields Road and they're going to keep the trees, then what are you going to see? It has the potential to be Vinoville. This is Kernersville, not Vinoville. You can put up trees, but the lay of the land doesn't present itself. I know this is a rezoning request, and we're only talking about 26 extra houses. But what is that appearance that you're going to get going down that road? So, it does not complement the existing developments that are there. We do have a shared responsibility, a history lesson from Charlie Snow and Sully Coltrane. I learned this many years ago as a little kid. The spring that starts Abbott's Creek is on that property. And as we know, that property, Abbott's Creek, gets to be bigger and it comes to stream, and it is the drinking water for Thomasville. So, there are watershed issues, and I'm sure there are engineers that can make sure that those kind of issues are taken care of. And I hope that they will be. We have a crown jewel. It is our investment, and we need to make sure that we protect the integrity of our land. The traffic count that Mr. Hatling quoted was of 2017, and that's the first time I saw it tonight, and it said 1,100. The trips per day with the addition to this rezoning request would add 1,100. But I saw the traffic count from 2017 on Union Cross Road. And yes, we're still in a lockdown with a COVID-19. Come out to our field, and you can sit on my pickup truck. And on Friday about 5:00 o'clock, you can see how far the traffic backs up. And when we get back to normal, if we get back to normal, and everybody goes back to work, usually it's on Fridays, we're over there at the park entrance itself on Beeson Road when the traffic backs up. So, the infrastructure simply is not there currently to support the extra 26 houses that are there. And I guess it just goes back to integrity. And this is my last comment. The traffic certainly, infrastructure isn't there. And you heard tonight, Board of Aldermen and Women, that we're seven years out at best with trying to take care of that. You know, build it and they will come. Well, that's been the problem so often, and that's some of our headaches right now. I thought the town did a really good job with the South Main in trying to get that major headache that we've had for years lessened, because you started building after you put the Lowe's Shopping Center in there, you got the roads wide. I just hope that the town of Kernersville and the ones that are stewards, because now the Board of Aldermen, it's in your hand. You are the stewards of the town of Kernersville. And I hope the decision will be more based not on tax, but on what's in the best interest of all the citizens of our great town. So, with that said, the Fitzpatrick family respectfully requests that this rezoning proposal be denied. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, David. Is there anyone else in the courtroom to speak?
No, ma'am.
Okay, is there anyone else on the line to speak other than Mr. Greco?
No, ma'am.
All right, Mr. Greco, you still have an open microphone. Would you like to do a rebuttal? If you do, then the opponents will have another opportunity to speak.
Yes, Madam Mayor, would. Do I need to restate my address for the record, or?
Just your name.
Yes, my name. Bill Greco, representing the applicant. Appreciate the comments from the neighbors, and certainly we understand the challenges that people see when they see change, that they're not necessarily in favor of. With that said, I think most of the comments, I don't want to get into a tit-for-tat on that. We can look at the package staff as prepared, look at the facts of the case, and see that our lots and homes, our lot sizes, there are lot sizes in Salisbury that are half the size of what we are proposing. Again, we're not doing anything here outside of accepted averages around us and what blends in perfectly with this community, our standards, our sizes. This is all right there. We're right in the middle. You can find lots that are bigger, you can find lots that are smaller. You can find houses that are more expensive, you can find houses that are way cheaper as well. So, I think that's all there. The one thing that keeps coming up that I do want to be clear, particularly for those who are opposed, the connectivity is not a developer-driven or an owner-driven piece. That is the town's UDO. If you look at Mr. Hatling's report, or memo if you will, to the Planning Board dated June 10th, he goes into great detail in there about connectivity. It includes the UDO standards for connectivity and some alternatives there. Should the Board of Aldermen choose to go into that process, we certainly wouldn't oppose it. And just to summarize it quickly, there's some things in there about connectivity, some options. Requires a finding of fact, the Board of Aldermen could delay this connection. You could remove this connection. But that finding of fact is not what's before us tonight with this rezoning. And again, the connection is not crucial to, it's not being driven by us. We didn't suggest it. If you look at our plan, we actually left a very gracious buffer between ourselves and Fieldcrest, where we're not bringing homes in our new development right up to the property line. We've left a, you know, four, five, six lot wide corridor of just common area to provide a little bit of buffer through that transition. So, again, that street connectivity piece, that's not on us. That's the town's UDO, and that's the Board of Aldermen's purview to approve as is, to suggest changes, to delay, or to remove. And we don't have any opposition whatsoever to any of those alternatives should you choose to explore. But again, we do meet all the standards, and we would appreciate your favorable vote. And I'll remain on the line if there are any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Greco. Ms. Atkins, or Mr. Fitzpatrick, or if Mr. Calhoun would like to call in again, would any of you like to give a rebuttal? The total amount of time allocated amongst all speakers would be five minutes.
Ms. Atkins and Mr. Fitzpatrick do not wish to give a rebuttal.
Okay, thank you.
What happened?
I'm waiting to see if Mr. Calhoun would like to call in for a moment. Okay, we've had proponents speak, we've had opponent speak, we've had a rebuttal, and there's no counter rebuttal, so I will declare this public hearing closed. So, Mr. Greco, we can mute your microphone. Mr. Hutchins, if you could mute Mr. Greco's microphone.
Yes, ma'am.
And Mr. Greco, you can stay on the line. If anyone needs to ask you a question, we'll unmute your microphone and ask it. Okay. All right, so there's a lot of information between Mr. Hatling's presentation, the numerous emails we have received, the petitions we have received, the comments tonight. So, I'll just go do a roll call so that everyone has an opportunity to speak. Fair Pretend Jenny Fulton, do you have any questions or comments at this time?
Mayor Morgan, I have a couple of questions that I'm, just want to make sure I understand.
Certainly, and you can ask those questions of anyone who's available to answer them.
Thank you. The first question I'll direct to, Mr. Greco or Mr. Hatling. When this got on our agenda, I went by and I got the plan from Mr. Hatling. And so, when I look at the memo dated June 10th, Mr. Hatling, looks like the entrance is going to be moved and part of a street has got a red X on it. So, that's going to remove some houses, right? How many houses with the Serpentine Road will that remove from this project? Or will it stay the same, and where will those houses be located?
The applicant will need to answer that question.
Okay, Mr. Greco, we'll unmute your microphone so that you can answer that question.
Okay, after the redesign, you're correct. What you're seeing in the memo with the red X and the shifting of the entrance, that is correct. My goal would be to not lose any units. In a cursory review, I think we're going to, I think it's achievable, or we may lose one or two. It's not a wholesale change in any way, though.
Okay, okay, so you don't anticipate losing any houses by changing the entrance or working with our development staff and then removing one of the streets? Because if I'm looking at this correctly on that memo, that one connecting street will not be there. So, if a fire truck has to come down, he's going to go through the Serpentine as well to get to that very last house on, which street is it? Street A on the plan that, what it's showing. So, I'm very concerned about public safety, and so I'm just trying to figure out exactly how the fire truck's going to get to that very last house. And I'll ask that of Chief Alderman in just a minute, but again, I want to clarify. We're removing that one street, which makes it now a Serpentine. You've got to lose some housing, if I'm looking at this plan correctly.
You are correct, and the X does show that it's a portion of a street being removed. And I could just as easily have two short cul-de-sacs back to back right there facing each other. The street, the longest street on the plan will extend almost in a straight line out to Shields Road. So, the fire or EMS in that portion of this, I believe that's Street E. That would be a direct shot to Shields Road. The remainder of the subdivision, should the plan stay significantly the same as it is, EMS would have a choice of coming through Emperor Lane or looping around basically to get down there. Kind of mirror, that curve in Street E over to where the current entrance is at now.
Jeff is pulling the map up so that everyone can see it. You're on mute, Miss Fulton.
Thank you, Mr. Swisher. I believe that's actually Street B is in Bowie, because E is your longest street, A being the street that connects to Emperor Lane. So, what you're losing is part of Street B if that entrance is moved over. I'm just, again, trying to clarify and make sure I'm looking at this correctly.
Jeff, can you enlarge the map?
Hey, you're correct. It is part of Street B.
Okay, all right, now...
So, do you see on the plan where it physically says Street B, 50-foot public right of way? Just for the sake, just for the sake of real fast redesign, I could drop a cul-de-sac right there, which is at Lot 6, 7. That becomes a cul-de-sac. Lots 7, 8, 9, and the ones across the street. Kind of swing those back clockwise towards Shields Road.
Okay, I see exactly what you're talking about. And then, I'll just look, and we can, I can ask this question of Jeff later. Let's go to Chief Alderman, if he's still on the line. Chief?
Yes, ma'am. I'm on the line.
Okay, thank you. A quick question. So, this subdivision would fall under Station 42, correct? Right off Highway 66 would be the first end?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and so if you're going to Street A and you're getting to that last house, you will have to use the fire truck to go through the Serpentine, correct? If, or would you come, what's the second end? Is that Union Cross or Beeson's?
Beeson's.
Beeson's. So, just talk to me around that gate. Do we have a gate anywhere else in Kernersville?
Yes, ma'am. We have gates. Smith Crossing is one location. We also have a gate that's going to be installed on Emergency Access Road subdivision that's being built off of Old Winston Road.
But that's a gated community altogether off of Old Winston Road, right?
Yes, ma'am. The reason for the Emergency Access Road is because of the size of the subdivision. When, in the fire code, when you have a one or two-family dwelling that, excuse me, developed... When, in the fire code, when you have a one or two family dwelling that, excuse me, development that exceeds 30,000 units, then a two separate and approved fire apparatus access roads are required.
That answers a lot. Okay, Mayor Morgan, I'm good. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Bruce Boyer, do you have questions or comments at this time? And you may ask questions of anyone who is available.
Okay, first I'll start with the developer, if I could, Mr. Greco. In the staff report, it showed two different styles of homes. Are there more styles that people would choose from?
Our plan is to develop, further develop a portfolio. The two plans that we did submit, the two renderings, if you will, we were working with staff on that to make sure that we could address our neighborhood standards. And if you look at the staff report, those two plans we felt were most representative. It shows a good mix of materials, bricks, stone, hardy siding. It shows the roof pitches, the gables, the trim. Yes, I mean, that, we actually were looking for a one-story plan to, to show and a two-story plan with the front entry garage, which is, is typical for this type of development. So there, there is certainly a potential for additional variation, but they would be no lesser of a standard than what you're seeing right here.
Okay. Second question, the staff report indicated the brick and block accent materials. Some of the neighbors are concerned of how much of the surface is vinyl or perhaps hardy board? Any idea on that?
I, I don't have exact percentages for you, no. I do not, you know, what we've shown is that mix and that's, that's what our, our product is leaning towards is just a good mix. So I don't think we've included anything specific as to what percentage could be applied where.
Okay, and what's the typical square footage of the homes?
And you just threw me a curveball.
Okay.
I'm, I'm going to guess that they're, and this is completely a guess, I'm going to guess that they're 2,500 square feet plus. I may, I may be slightly off on that.
Okay. Then I've got a few questions for Jeff, if I could, please. Jeff, I know that a PRD allows some more flexibility in, in design standards and that kind of thing. What does the town gain from a PRD special use in this case?
PRD fits a site like this because environmentally sensitive areas, as described by David Fitzpatrick. You have a sensitive headwaters here. It allows you to cluster the homes to be more cost effective with, you know, future road maintenance. If you can decrease the linear feed of your roadways, the long-term maintenance costs, the town is cheaper. At the same time, it also offers the opportunity to give more flexibility for layout and house options.
Okay, and the second question, Chief Alderman indicated that 30 homes is sort of the benchmark where you really need to have a second access and Fieldcrest, I believe it's about 28 homes. Obviously, the, the proposed development is a lot more than that. Who benefits the most from a gate if we only allow emergency access and, and don't ever allow it to be public traffic? Who benefits the most from, or what are the benefits of having a gate and allowing emergency vehicles only?
Well, currently, as described, people are concerned about the traffic congestion on Union Cross Road and Shields Road. And so a gate would allow for both the existing development of Fieldcrest and the proposed development. Both have a secondary option. So if there's an accident on Shields Road or accident on Union Cross Road, the fire department would be approaching from two different directions typically. And so both benefit almost identical, both do identical benefits because the reason why you have connectivity for emergency services is to give that second option, especially in this case where you're, you're at too busy major thoroughfares where you're concerned about traffic congestion and accidents.
I know we've talked a lot about if, in the planning board, it suggested the gate that only is allowing emergency vehicles until, up until the time of intersection improvements at Union Cross and Shield Road. What's the possibility and advisability of always having that gate and it only be for emergency vehicles and not for public traffic back and forth?
That'd be something the Board of Aldermen would have to do the findings under, under the Unified Development Orders in the memo I provided to the planning board and the public and Board of Aldermen, their description of findings that are required to be made by the Board of Aldermen to comply with the laws.
Okay. You know, we have seen that the earliest that intersection improvements could happen in an ideal world is about seven years, according to the four years of DOT waiting on their funding and then design and that kind of thing. You indicated that another possible assist to that area would be when that Loop Road or Kernersville Boulevard connects Big Mill Farm to Highway 66. How far in the future is that going to be?
I don't think, there's any, there's no schedule. Currently, typically, you're going to see intersection improvements as I described. The two-lane road section like Shields Road could probably handle up to 17,000, 18,000 trips per day. A good example, Hopkins Road that's being designed for road improvements, I believe they're going to have up to 17,000 and 19,000 trips per day and that's going to be a two-lane undivided. So Shields Road, being a two-lane major thoroughfare, was limited access, can handle a lot of traffic. Your backup is your intersections and not necessarily in between, in between the intersections. This project would have turn lanes to further accommodate the major thoroughfare safety requirements and also allowing traffic to flow.
Okay, and then my last question is, I've read through about an inch thick of comment letters from, from citizens. One of the citizens said that some road plan actually has a road going straight over to Union Cross Road, which may be cross prohibitive, but is, is there ever been a plan for a road that would go from this area to Union Cross Road that could provide that second access?
Yes, on our, on our thoroughfare plan, there's a proposed route just north of Beeson Cross, just north of Beeson Crossroads, right past where the shopping centerary areas, that would be a new intersection and a road would head up to, I'm trying to think of the name of the road, Shields Road turns into.
Wicker Road on the other side.
Yes, yeah, so that proposed road, road between Wicker Road and Maston Drive. And so that's on our thoroughfare for our long-term solution to address some of the traffic on, on Union Cross. But I think it's important to note, once again, two-lane cross-sections can handle a lot of traffic, but Union Cross, when I gave that 2017 count, so you can see they're getting closer to that 17, 18,000 trips per day. And so in the future, the town or NC DOT will have decided to widen Union Cross or give an alternative route. So that's why on a thoroughfare plan, we have that alternative route in the future, but there's no current plans or funding.
And of course, that's on the other side of Union Cross, so they still have to go through the intersection for that to really benefit this area.
Yeah, the, the thought is eventually the Union Cross, a lot of people will continue going north on Union Cross, wanting to take a left onto Wicker Road. And then giving them that alternative will take a percent of the traffic off that is heading up north to our South Main Street or Business 40 to the new Big Mill Farm interchange.
Okay, Don, that's all the questions I have right now.
Thank you, Alderman Boyer. All right. Alderman Chris Thompson, do you have any questions or comments?
I've got several comments and a couple of questions. Thank you very much. Most of my questions are for Jeff, but I want, just want to make a couple quick. I want to thank the developer, first of all, for his interest in the town and being willing to come here and put in a development. I'm going to thank all the citizens that have sent emails and been concerned about their community. It's nice to see everyone getting involved. Want to hit on that. I also want to clarify, the Kernersville newspaper, I spoke to them this morning, I just want to clear this up because there was some confusion. They reported that we're putting, this was a planned rezoning for townhomes, which it's not, just want to clear that up. They are issuing a retract and in the Thursday paper to state that it's single-family detached home. That being said, on Jeff, this question's for you. Original plan had two entrances to this subdivision on Shields Road and then it was redesigned to have one entrance. And watching the planning board, it looked like it was changed to one entrance and then made a Serpentine to redesign for possible cut-through to slow people down. Is that right?
Correct. The intersection would be shifted to the east towards the park and then the interior road would be redesigned so it's not a direct route to Fieldcrest.
So the reason I'm asking is, if, if that's recommended to stop the cut-through, what, I guess, let me back up, I'm going to digress, I apologize. I talked to Chief, Fire Chief Alderman today and we were discussing the UDO entrances and the fire code on the number of houses needed to have and the number of entrances you need to have based on the number of houses you had in that particular subdivision. And so that being said, Fieldcrest has 29 or less houses. I think the cutoff point is 30 houses. If it has 30 houses or less, it only has to have one entrance per the fire code based on what we discussed today. So if that's the case, two entrances off of Shields Road into this new subdivision would make it such that you would not even need a gate or a, an entry level from this new subdivision into Fieldcrest. So that's what I'm trying to figure out. If we did, if we had two entrances into the subdivision, we wouldn't even have, having a discussion about a gate going into Fieldcrest. And whenever we've made this exception, I think, I think Chief Alderman mentioned Smith Crossing, that was just done maybe two years ago. We're towards Kingswood Drive. We've made exceptions with gates in different subdivisions. So I guess that's my first concern is if we left those two entrances off of Shields Road, we wouldn't even need to discuss having connectivity to Fieldcrest. That'd be my first concern. Second is, I have a question on your two options, potential options to address traffic concerns. I know you stated that worst-case scenario, funding's four years from now, could take three years to get everything in place, but I'm not sure that that actually goes along with the two options that we have unless I'm understanding it wrong. My question is, at what point, we'll say the subdivision goes in, at what point does the intersection, redesign the intersection and Kernersville has to get on, involved with DOT, redesign the intersection to handle the amount of traffic that might be there? That to me is a separate option than the four years, I mean, the four years from now and then the three, the seven years total of anything done, being done with the traffic at the intersection. Does that make sense?
Best-case scenario is seven years. That's, I mean, that's a very aggressive.
Okay, so, but that's seven years also pertains to the redesigning of the intersection that we'd have to get with DOT to move forward with if that's the case.
We would have to obtain funding from NC DOT or NC DOT would have to take it on or we'd do a combination with the 80/20 funds that are eligible every two years from our MPO, but that's also very competitive. And so, you know, like I said, that if everything was perfect, the best-case scenario would be seven years, you know, plus, and that's very conservative.
Okay, thank you. And then you've got the traffic count of 2007 and 2017 for Union Cross and for Shields Road. Can we get that for 66? Because I know that this development is close to Union Cross and it's on Shields Road, but the other end of the street tends to get a little heavy at certain times, too. I'd like to know what the traffic count difference is on 66 at that 2007 and 2017 as well.
Okay, we can provide that during a public hearing update of 24-hour period.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all my comments and questions right now. Madam Mayor, thank you. Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Alderman Thompson. All right, Alderman Kenny Chris, do you have questions or comments?
I don't have any questions now. I think all our other Aldermen have already asked them and answered them and I like Chris, I thank all the builders and the residents for having confidence in us and for all their input and I just hope we can all get, get through this virus and, and all of us can come to a good conclusion here. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Kenny. Alderman Joe Pennix, do you have any questions or comments?
I think most of my questions have been answered. I do have, I do have a couple of comments. I am concerned about the traffic. I go out to Ivy Redmond Park several times a week at different times of the day and I've noticed over the last few years that the traffic has gotten worse and worse. People have found out about how quickly they can get through there to Union Cross Road from 66 by cutting through on Shields Road and that, that is one concern I have. I remember learning to drive on Shields Road when I was a kid. My daddy took me out there, it was a dirt road and I know things change, but I never would have imagined that much traffic going through that strip there. I do have one question for Mr. Greco and maybe due to technology, I misunderstood your comment. I think Alderman Boyer asked you a question about the approximate square footage of the homes you're planting out there and I think your comment was, well, you just threw me a curveball. Was that your comment?
The, the question, am I unmuted?
Yes.
Yeah, the, the question on, on the square footage did stump me there just for a minute. While we've been on this call, I've, I've had some text messages and some other things from others involved with the project and on the team to clarify that. We do believe we're 2,000 to 2,500 square feet and also as to the value, I threw a range of 250 to 275 and they're telling me they think that, you know, 275 to three and, and above three is even possible and potential out there. So we're, you know, our main thing on the, on the rezoning piece was to address the architectural standards and some of the other RPD considerations. But yeah, 2,000 to 2,500 would be a sort of a base plan. This is typical of a semi-custom community where you've got a base plan that starts at X and then people can choose to add a sunroom or enlarge a master bedroom, reduce some things of that nature and change their finishes and so forth and so on to bring that value up. So I don't think you'd see anything smaller than 2,000. I think 2,500 is probably a good baseline and probably 300,000 is a better baseline for the values there. It's always dangerous to overstate. This team tends to under-promise and over-deliver. dangerous to overstate. This team tends to under-promise and over-deliver.
Well, I've been a real estate broker for almost 50 years, and dealt with a lot of developers, but it seems to me that if you're planning 117 homes, and when somebody asks you just the approximate square footage, and you say that is a curveball, I'm stunned. I have no further questions.
Could I clarify that I'm not the, the vertical component of this? Horizontal development and land use planning is more in line with, with what I do. That, it threw me for a minute, and our firm deals with multiple mini subdivisions at once. So it just, I didn't have that square footage just right on the tip of my tongue, and I apologize for that. But we certainly have a vertical component in this on the building side that has that more dialed in than I.
I have no further questions.
Mayor Morgan, I have one more question.
Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem Fulton.
Mr. Hatling, did we have any community meetings like the one that was held off the Old Winston Road for that subdivision? I'm just curious, did, were any community meetings held for this project?
Are unified development ordinance requests that the applicant provide us, if they do reach out for additional public comments, and I believe, we leave it up to the applicant. In this case, I believe the applicant sent out letters a day or two before the planning board public hearing. So that's the process. So the applicants have the option to reach out. In this case, I think was described earlier by the applicant, they did send the letter out a few days before the planning board, and they have corresponded with some. I believe Bill also said two people came to his office.
I did hear two people came to his office, so maybe I'm asking the wrong person the question. So, I understand there was a letter sent out June 1st. Planning board meeting was June 8th. Did we hold a community meeting? I know that in Kernersville, when it's a big project like the one off Old Winston Road, there was a community meeting held for that. There was a community meeting held for apartments that were going to go next to Lowe's Shopping Center. There was a community meeting held for the Woodfield Development. So I'm just curious, did we hold one for this or not? It's simply yes or no. I'm just curious.
Bill will have to answer that.
On our side, we did send a letter to a number of adjacent property owners, and we encouraged them to share that with their neighbors and to reach out to us for additional information, so forth, so on. We did not hold a community, a community meeting. We did not.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Given the questions and comments that have happened so far, do any of the Aldermen, Mayor Pro Tem, do you have any further questions or comments before we move on to discuss when we're going to hold the vote on this? Okay, I see some heads shaking.
No, no further comments.
All right. Okay, so, we have continued the prior public hearing, which was Agenda Item 1A, to 4:00 PM Thursday, July 2nd. Do I have a motion to continue this public hearing to that continued meeting?
So moved.
Second, Mayor.
Okay, we've got a motion by Alderman Thompson, a second by Mayor Pro Tem Fulton. Again, because this is a remote meeting, I do have to do a roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tem Fulton, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Boyer, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Thompson, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Cruz, how do you vote?
Favor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Pennix, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. So this vote is to continue this public here, excuse me, we've, we've had the public hearing, but we are as continuing this rezoning matter for the vote to 4:00 PM Thursday, July 2nd. It will be the second item on the agenda, and there is an opportunity to submit public comment. Emails should be sent to khooker@toknc.com. Mr. Hooker, so that we have a, a certain deadline for the comments, and Mr. Swisher, what time do you suggest that we receive the comments by on Thursday?
Madam Mayor, I would just, no later than noon on that Thursday. If you wanted to send it earlier in the morning, that would be fine.
Okay. All right. Any citizens who would like to make a comment that would be then posted on our Town of Kernersville webpage as, it would be, Mr. Hooker will designate the topic, the heading, but it should be something along the lines of email to Board of Aldermen, 6:30 through 7:02. Those comments need to be submitted to khooker@toknc.com by noon on July 2nd, and then we will have the meeting at 4:00 PM that day. Anything else on this matter before we move on to the next? We'll do speakers from the floor, and then I'll plan to take a 10-minute recess. Is there anyone who would like to address the board who has called in or who has, is present in the courtroom? And of course, this needs to be per our usual rules on a non-agenda item. Mr. Swisher, is there anyone in the courtroom?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Hutchins, has anyone called in?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. All right, seeing none, we will, if the board would like to, we can take a 10-minute recess.
Yes.
Okay. Motion by Alderman Thompson, do I have a second?
Second.
I've got a second by Alderman Bruce Boyer. Regrettably, I still have to do it by a roll call. Mayor Pro Tem Fulton?
In favor, thank you.
Alderman Boyer?
In favor, thank you.
Alderman Thompson?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Cruz?
In favor, thank you.
Awesome, awesome. Alder, Alderman Pennix?
In favor, thank you.
Okay, I've got 9:27 is the time, so this meeting will stand adjourned until 9:37. So we'll be in recess till 9:37. Welcome back to the regular meeting of the Kernersville Board of Aldermen. Since we did take a brief recess, I'm going to do a roll call to make sure all of the Aldermen and Mayor Pro Tem are back in attendance. Mayor Pro Tem Jenny Fulton?
Here, thank you.
Alderman Bruce Boyer?
Present.
Thank you. Alderman Chris Thompson?
Present, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Kenny Cruz?
Present, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Joe Pennix?
Present, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll pick up the agenda where we left off. We had just finished our public session, speakers from the floor, which is Agenda Item 2A. So we'll move on now to Agenda Item 2B, consideration of allowing Mitch Powell perpetual access to an easement over Town of Kernersville property at 119 Harmon Lane and Town of Kernersville Town Hall access off Harmon Lane. Mr. Swisher?
Madam Mayor, this is the parcel that is right adjacent to the entrance to Town Hall there from Harmon Lane. It's the house that they're currently renovating, and they have asked to have an access easement from the back of their property onto the town's driveway, the one that comes into Town Hall. I've looked at that along with Town Attorney John Wolf and Police Chief Summers. We don't see any issue with granting this access and easement. It is, again, in the lane that comes into Town Hall, not the lane going out of Town Hall. So there would not be an issue with any emergency traffic or anything such as that. So we don't have an issue with granting this easement.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion by Alderman Thompson, second by Mayor Pro Tem Fulton. Mayor Pro Tem, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Boyer, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Thompson, how do you vote?
In favor, thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Cruz, how do you vote?
You're muted, Kenny.
Favor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Pennix, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item is Item C, discussion and consideration of a resolution declaring a fire engine as surplus and donating the fire engine to the Fire Academy at Glenn High School. Mr. Swisher, would you like to take this item?
Yes, ma'am. This item came up several months ago, and we asked to table it because at the time we did not have our new fire engine in for Station 42. We now have that fire truck in, and we're asking the board to approve the donation of the oldest truck to the Fire Academy at Glenn High School. This will allow them to do training on a live vehicle. We also have an agreement with Glenn for them to use our new fire training facility at Station 42. So this would be a good way to even further improve that training for Glenn High School.
Thank you. Chief Alderman, would you like to speak to this donation or the Training Academy?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor. As Manager Swisher said, this will be a very good asset for the Fire Academy. One of the integral parts of fire training is hands-on training, and this fire engine will definitely benefit the hands-on training for future firefighters, hopefully some of which will be working for the town one day.
Thank you. I appreciate the effort of Chief Bowles and the others who were involved in the design of the new fire engine, and I think it looks great. So thank you for the good work on, in that regard as well. Does anyone have any questions or comments before we take a vote?
I think this is a wonderful opportunity, and I'd make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Alderman Thompson, second by Mayor Pro Tem Fulton. Mayor Pro Tem, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Boyer, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Thompson, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Cruz, how do you vote?
You're on mute, Kenny. Still on mute. Just shake your head once if you're in favor.
Okay. I saw you saying favor. All right, so, and the shaking head worked good, too. Okay, Alderman Pennix, are you in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Thank you. It's unanimous. All right, we look forward to hearing great things from Glenn High School, from their Fire Academy. All right, Item D is Presentation of 2019 Growth and Traffic Data Annual Report and 2019 Thoroughfare and Street Plan Annual Report, and the planning board took these up as two separate agenda items, but we are combining them tonight. I'll recognize our Community Development Director, Mr. Hatling.
Thank you, Mayor Morgan. Just very briefly, these are the annual reports as required by the Thoroughfare and Street Plan. The growth and traffic report is used by the development community to look at traffic for commercial and also for developers to have a better understanding of the growth trends in Kernersville, be it industrial, residential, or commercial. Our Thoroughfare and Street Plan, that annual report is just to update the planning board, Board of Aldermen and the community on the current activities that are taking place and the proposed, of course, right now, we're going through some changes. Staff has already started working on the economic study. I'm looking at the current trends based upon the pandemic. Fortunately, Kernersville is looking strong. I sent out an early report a couple of weeks ago on our recovery, and so staff will continue to work hard on monitoring the current local economic conditions and, of course, the state and national conditions that impact us. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions at this time?
Mr. Hatling, I have one quick question, Mayor. So, I'm pulling it up on my computer over here. Do we have the actual new numbers for 2019, or 2019? Because I thought earlier tonight, those numbers weren't out yet, or are they in here?
No, the, even though it's 2000, we do not have the newest count. The 2019, even if we contact our traffic engineer at our district office, he doesn't have them because they run out of Raleigh, and so they'll be released later this year in a 2019 counts.
So will that come to T A C first? Will I get it, and then it go to municipalities or backwards?
It goes out to everybody all at once.
Okay.
So.
Thank you. That's it, Mayor.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
No, thank you. Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept this report? Okay, motion by, okay, I've got a motion and a second. Mayor Pro Tem Fulton, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Boyer, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Alderman Thompson, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Cruz, how do you vote? You want to raise your hand if it's in favor? Thank you. Alderman Pennix, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is Item E, consideration of an ordinance for Budget Amendment 7 for fiscal year 1920. Mr. Swisher?
You have the budget amendment request in your packet, and this is the last budget amendment for fiscal year seven, or not seven, but fiscal year 1920. This pretty much cleans up all of the departments, some of those line items. The biggest budget amendments or biggest changes are in projects that we've had budgeted for fiscal year 1920 that we did not do. You'll see that on the front page of the memo, number seven, under General Fund expenditures. We decreased the Special Appropriations Department in the amount of $325,776. That was actually from development fee projects in Caleb's Creek. That's not a project we were doing. We had decreased revenues in that area. Projects that we are not recognizing this year that we had planned are the road project at National Pipe Project, National Pipe and Plastic. There's a road project as well as a sewer project. That's item number five in the General Fund expenditures portion of the budget amendment. That's $403,489. That project was budgeted for fiscal year 1920, but we did not do that project. We will carry that over into fiscal year 2021. That also has an offset decrease in revenues, as you will see on the backside of your memo. That is item number five. There you see the decrease in revenues there, $297,955 to offset that, as well as in number two, there's some money there to make up the full difference. So the net, the net balance of the budget amendment is we will be decreasing the amount of fund balance appropriated right now for fiscal year 1920 by $102,773. So that leaves total appropriation to date of $2,924,144. If you then, when the fiscal years finalized and everything is said and done, that number should also decrease. Glad to answer your questions.
Are there any questions with Mr. Swisher?
No, I have to.
Do I have a motion? Motion by Alderman Thompson, second by Mayor Pro Tem Fulton. Bruce, did you have a question?
No, I did not.
Okay. All right, so, Mayor Pro Tem Fulton, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Boyer, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Thompson, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you, Curtis.
Thank you. Alderman Cruz, how do you vote? Raise your hand. Okay, thank you. That's in favor. Alderman. Thank you. Alderman Cruz, how do you vote? Raise your hand. Okay, thank you. That's in favor. Alderman Penix, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. All right, if we're done with that item, we'll move on to Item F, consideration of lease renewal. Wow, consideration of lease renewal with Verizon. Mr. Swisher?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to request that the board withdraw this item from the agenda.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Some moves.
Okay, I've got a motion by Alderman Boyer. I've got a second by Alderman Thompson. Mayor Pro Tem Fulton, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Okay, in favor withdrawing. Alderman Boyer, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Thompson, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Cruz, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you. Alderman Penix, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Item G is consideration of sale of land leased to American Tower. Mr. Swisher?
Madam Mayor, I'll give you a little background information about what this tower is. There's currently a water tower off of Grayland Street. It's right behind Cheer Extreme. Right next to that water tower is a communications tower. That tower is owned by American Tower. We entered a lease with them in 1994. They simply leased the ground space from us for that tower. The town does not own the tower. We do not have a lease with the companies that own that tower, and we've had a lease with American Tower. It started out as Spectracide or Dial Call or someone. In 1994, we renewed that lease with them in, maybe 2016, granted them five more five-year terms. So we currently generate in the area of about $60,000 a year in lease from that tower. A part of that is they currently, when they, not currently, but when they initially leased space from us, they leased 3,750 square feet. They increased that to about 5,900 square feet in 1998 because Verizon Wireless needed to place some equipment on the ground. So we have a land, land lease with Verizon Wireless, who has equipment on the ground there along with American Tower, and we also get a portion of the companies that own the tower, a small bit of a prorated rent from those companies. So we, we generate about $60,000 a year from that right now. We've been working with American Tower, John Wolf and myself, for probably two years now, a year and a half. They started out wanting to purchase the land lease. They're not purchasing the land, they're purchasing the lease of the land and the easement to get back to their property or to their tower. They started out, they offered us about $400,000 for that land lease. We told them that would not work, we were not interested. Over a period of some months, we've now gotten them to agree to $1.2 million to purchase that land lease. That lease goes through 2045. As I said earlier, they, in 2016 or 18, they extended that to five, five more, five, five-year terms, so 25 more years. And that simply sells the lease to them for that piece of property that their tower is on. We ran the numbers. It would take us about 16 years probably to generate that much in rent. Mr. Wolf and myself talked about it. We feel as though it is a good deal for the town, town to sell that land lease to American Tower. As you all are aware, the, you know, the communications industry, especially with cell phones, changes quickly. These companies come to us all of the time wanting to renew their lease, lower their lease, you know, all kinds of things. So we don't know whether it would even still be there in 25 years or even be there in 16 years. So we are recommending to the Board of Aldermen that we sell that land lease to American Tower and agree to sell it to them for the sum of 1.2 million, and you have that agreement, option to purchase in your packet. I'll be glad to answer any questions. Mr. Wolf can answer any questions as well about that agreement. Over a period of some months, we've now gotten them to agree to $1.2 million to purchase that land lease. That lease goes through 2045. As I said earlier, they, in 2016 or 18, they, they extended that to five, five more, five, five-year terms, so 25 more years. And that simply sells the lease to them for that piece of property that their tower is on. We ran the numbers. It would take us about 16 years probably to generate that much in rent. Mr. Wolf and myself talked about it. We feel as though it is a good deal for the town, town to sell that land lease to American Tower. As you all are aware, the, you know, the communications industry, especially with cell phones, changes quickly. These companies come to us all of the time wanting to renew their lease, lower their lease, you know, all kinds of things. So we don't know whether it would even still be there in 25 years or even be there in 16 years. So we are recommending to the Board of Aldermen that we sell that land lease to American Tower and agree to sell it to them for the sum of 1.2 million, and you have that agreement, option to purchase in your packet. I'll be glad to answer any questions. Mr. Wolf can answer any questions as well about that agreement.
Any other questions?
Just to comment, I think that's a great deal for the town of Kernersville.
Thank you, Curtis and John, for working hard on that over the past two years. It's a really nice deal for Kernersville, so thank you both.
Do I have a motion?
I'm motioning.
I think it came in as Mayor Pro Tem Fulton is making the motion. Chris, would you like to second?
I'll second, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Fulton, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Boyer, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Thompson, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Cruz, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you. Alderman Penix, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are to items H and I, which are related, I believe. Yes, consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter 20 Parks and Recreation, the Code of Ordinance for the town of Kernersville, adding members to the Recreation Advisory Board, and Item I, consideration of a resolution to increase the membership of the Recreation Advisory Board. We'll vote on them separately, but Mr. Swisher, would you like to address these items together?
Yes ma'am, we currently have nine members on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Parks and Recreation Director Ernie Pages has requested that we increase that number from nine to 11. We feel like that's probably a good thing to do. We'll add two more members to that, give us some more membership there as well and help, help out in the times when, you know, we have some trouble with members actually getting to the meeting for whatever reason. So that will just give us some more seats on that board and add some, some more thought to it.
Okay, do I have any discussion questions or do I have a motion?
Some moves.
All right, this will be, I'm sorry, I mean, to be more specific, this will be the motion for Item H, consideration of an ordinance. So I've got a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Fulton for that, is that correct?
Yes ma'am.
Second.
Okay, second by Alderman Boyer, and this is for Item H. Mayor Pro Tem Fulton, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Boyer, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Thompson, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Cruz, would you like, okay, in favor. Alderman Penix, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have to vote on the resolution, consideration of a resolution to increase the membership of the Recreation Advisory Board. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion and just clarify for the record that because we are increasing to 11, that will increase our quorum. To six. I just want that noted in there.
Okay, I've got a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Fulton. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Bruce Boyer. Mayor Pro Tem Fulton, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Boyer, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Thompson, how do you vote?
In favor, thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Cruz, in favor, thank you. Alderman Penix?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will move on then to Item J, consideration of placeholders in minute book for the town of Kernersville for March 17 special session, April 1 briefing meeting, April 7 regular meeting, April 29 briefing meeting, and May 5 regular meeting. Mr. Swisher?
These are placeholders. The meetings were not held because of the COVID-19 pandemic. These placeholders will be in our meeting book, or our minute book rather, to show that their, their meeting wasn't skipped or the minutes aren't missing. It will simply show that the meeting was not held.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second then.
I've got a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Fulton. I have a second by Alderman Bruce Boyer. Mayor Pro Tem Fulton, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you. And good job to Keith on that. So I want to say thank you, Keith.
Absolutely, I agree. Alderman Boyer, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Thompson, how do you vote?
In favor, and happy birthday to Keith. I think today's his birthday.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Alderman Cruz? Thank you. Alderman Penix, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So then we have the consent agenda. All of the following matters are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion with no separate discussion unless a board member or citizen so requests, in which event the matter will be removed from the consent agenda and considered under the following item, A, consideration of appointments to various boards and commissions, and B, consideration of appointments to the Recreation Advisory Board. Do I have a, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion to approve the consent agenda by Mayor Pro Tem Fulton, a second by Alderman Boyer?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mayor Pro Tem, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Boyer, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Thompson, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Cruz, how do you vote? In favor. Alderman Penix, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So now we have speakers from the floor. Is there anyone in the courtroom who'd like to speak to the board on a non-agenda item?
No ma'am.
Okay, and I don't see that anyone has called in. Has anyone called in to speak on a non-agenda item?
No ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Adam. All right, we are to Town Managers' Report.
I do not have anything, Madam Mayor.
Okay, now we are to matters to be presented by the Town Attorney. Mr. Wolf, do you have anything to present? Thank you. All right, matters to be presented by the mayor and Board of Aldermen. Chris Thompson, I think we'll start with you. I think, did you say something about it being Keith's birthday today?
Today is our clerk's birthday. Happy birthday to Keith. Hope it was a good day. Sorry to keep you on so late. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, Alderman Boyer, do you have anything?
No, nothing to add to the meeting.
Thank you. Alderman Cruz? Okay, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Fulton?
No, happy birthday, Keith. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Penix?
No, but happy birthday, Keith.
All right, happy birthday, Keith. We appreciate all you do for us and coming to, to help with the meeting on the night of your birthday. That's amazing, so thank you.
Mayor, I have one other thing real quick, just FYI, if anybody's still watching. The Winston-Salem Dash will be giving out free ice cream tomorrow in Kernersville after a hard day of getting their season canceled today. It'll be from four to five. They'll start at Fourth of July Park and go over into Branchwood and end up somewhere on Oakhurst. So just a heads up, free ice cream from the Winston-Salem Dash in Kernersville. Thank you.
Fantastic, sounds like a lot of fun. All right, is there anything more to cover in the meeting tonight?
No, motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I have a motion by Chris Thompson to adjourn. I have a second by Mayor Pro Tem Fulton, and just a reminder that.
Madam Mayor.
Adjourn, we've got a recess. The agenda says adjourn, but we actually need to, to recess because we've recessed the meeting for those two public hearings.
You're correct. My fault, sorry. I'll motion to recess till, until July 2nd at 4 o'clock.
Second. Okay, I've got a motion by Chris Thompson to recess this meeting until July 2nd, which is Thursday at 4 o'clock. And a reminder to our citizens, if you'd like to make further comments about either of the public hearings, that they can be accepted until noon on Thursday, July 2nd. If you could just email the comments to khooker@knc.com, and that email address is available on our agenda and in our social media. And I hear an echo.
That was me, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to make sure that for the record, this is, the continued meeting will also be available on the town's YouTube site and that it will be conducted from here.
Okay, so you can tune in, the same as you did today, to the town's YouTube channel to see this meeting on July 2nd at 4:00 PM, or you may come to Town Hall to the courtroom to watch it. And Keith, could you also put on our social media that comments will be accepted and your email address as well? And as you're loading things to this agenda, could you also load the ADA proclamation and the July is Parks and Rec proclamation for me? All right, and my apologies, I have to pause my computer for just a minute and plug in or I'll, I'll lose y'all. So just, if you'll bear with me for just one moment. Thank you. Okay, is there any further announcements or any further business? We have a motion by Chris Thompson to recess, a second by Mayor Pro Tem Fulton. I'll do a roll call vote if there's nothing further. Mayor Pro Tem Fulton, how do you vote?
In favor, good night.
Thank you. Alderman Boyer, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Thompson, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Cruz, how do you vote? Oh, in favor, thank you. Alderman Penix, how do you vote?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. This meeting is now recessed until Thursday, July 2.